Good evening, February 22, 2017, at exactly 7:00 PM. We're going to begin our public participation section prior to our common council meeting. I have several people signed up. Please keep in mind if you do speak, we do have a three-minute period of limitation to be able to speak, and we like to keep that as tight as we possibly can. First person to speak is Gulain Bolduk. Ms. Bolduk?
I need to speak to the mayor.
I'm sorry?
I need to address the mayor.
Okay, the mayor isn't here during public participation. So if you'd like to speak now, you may.
I looked.
Please make sure you give your address. I know you've had an issue with that.
It's already on the paper.
Okay. I'll take that as such. It is recorded in the record. You have some hesitation with that. Go ahead.
This needs to be brought up to the mayor. I'm having an issue with my landlord. What can you do for me about that? Because I have used all my resources. So what can she do for me? I have tried to contact her several times. I have given her my phone number, and I have not received any calls or any letters in the mail. And if she gets here today, I am waiting, and I will speak again. Excuse me, the person that's next, my dog.
Okay, thank you. Paul Zagorski. You knew that you were next, I gather.
I think there's only two people on, so it's quite a thing. Members of the council, good evening. Paul Zagorski, 125 Tenacre Road. I'm here to probably correct a couple misconceptions. There was a letter to the editor written in yesterday's Herald that talked about the Patton Brook well, which I'm pretty familiar with. And it talked about one, it said that there was a comment that the well was capable of producing 1.2 million gallons of water per day, and the individual said, "Well, that's never been tested. That's fake news." Your own resolution, when you approved the sale of the property, stated that it has a 1.20 million gallons per day withdrawal capacity. The city of Soullington has on file with the state of Connecticut a diversion permit for Patton Brook well of 1.314 million gallons per day. Mayor Stewart was quoted in a City Journal article this past year, saying that it could produce 1.5 million gallons a day. Now, I'm not saying it can necessarily produce it. Does it need some work? It does. I have a car. If the alternator breaks down, I don't throw it away. I put some money into it, I use it, and I produce it. He also went on to say that it's not connected, it cannot be connected to the filtration plant, something about we'd have to blast through the rock in the filtration plant. Patton Brook well is connected. I think everybody in this room, I hope, knows that. I'm reading a letter from a New Britain official who I had contacted to specifically ask that question, and this is quote-unquote, "The Patton Brook well was reconnected to the Shella Meadow reservoir at the end of October." And then they're saying, "The daily rate, if we can produce, would be around 400 million gallons a day," acknowledging that work needs to be done. So it is connected. That really isn't the big issue. The issue is, is this should have been reconnected in 2014. Because when this sale fell through in 2014, I'm reading from an email from Ray Esbanda, who is now the acting director of the Water Department, to Fred Rogers, the head of the Soullington Water Department. And this is, he says to Fred Rogers, "Please let me know when you plan to disconnect the well from your system. We are waiting to reconnect it to our system, and we wanted to use it now to supplement our reservoirs." So my question is, and I had been on two storm committees, I think somebody has to look at, one, why was that not reconnected? Two, we're in a drought. We're in a water supply emergency. We've been in it for three months. I don't know if anybody's even aware of that. Our reservoirs are 35% below capacity. Is how did we arrive at this drought? And what are we going to do to address it, to prevent it from happening in the future? I mean, water is life. If we're ignoring this issue, I mean, you can't take the approach, "This water crisis, if we don't talk about it, it doesn't exist." It needs to be talked about, and it needs to be debated and discussed in this chamber and by this council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to be able to speak for public participation? Yes, come on up. Go ahead.
My name is Joe DiGenti, 67, Martin Luther King Drive. I like opening the paper, but we keep talking about water. And the towns are saying, "What's the problem in the city of New Britain?" There is a use for that water. It doesn't have to be piped nowhere. 65 years ago, I believe, over that because I'm 70, there was a guy that bought a house on Corbin Avenue and Shella Meadow Road. And underneath, there was a stream of water. And he took that, and he turned it into Avery's Solar Company, which is pumping water out of the ground, making soda. Why does it have to be piped? This is the stuff, you could bottle water out of there. He's doing it on Corbin Avenue. He's not going to take in reservoir water. He's doing it out of the ground. Why can't we do that? You know, Soullington plays the games with you guys. I've seen this before with the movie theaters. What Soullington did, they rented it out for $100,000 a year. They stopped using it, they stopped paying you for 10 years. They saved $1 million, and now they're going to offer your $1 million for the water back again. That's a game that they play. They're playing with your money. My ticket says, "Bottle the water." If you don't want to send it, bottle it. There's a lot of money in bottled water, and it's purified, too. And if Avery's can do that on Corbin Avenue, I don't see why we can't do that on our well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Carmelo Rodriguez, 1254 Slater Road. And today, I'm here on behalf of the New Britain Latino Coalition. As chairman, I'm here to say thanks. A couple weeks ago, we had a real bad fire on West Street, and we had, the outcome was positive thanks to the heroes and the people that were involved. And first of all, I would like to thank our chief, our fire chief, New Britain Fire Department, for outstanding job, Chief Rinaldi and his staff, the New Britain Police Department, and the Chief Wardwell. Outstanding job. These guys were there to help the Department of Public Works, EMT, Red Cross, our mayor, Aaron Stewart. As a mayor, she was there. The staff at Molly School, they opened the school, so the people from the apartments were able to get warmed. The neighborhood, they came together to help the community of service. Casa Alfaredo recently awarded one of our own heroes. And I didn't bring them last because it was not important, but because I know that, everybody knows that we are, as the Latino community, we are very proud of Gabby Busanet, what he did. He took charge, you know, in the middle of a storm, in the middle of the wind, and under the circumstance, while the police and the fire and everybody showed up, bravely, he got up there and helped those families come down, those kids, and all the neighborhood. But also, there's another person that has been stayed in the shadow, which a lot of people have not heard, and that's Clarissa Ramadani, which is here also. She's the one who took the video. Without that video, we wouldn't have been able to show the heroes that were involved in this. So today, I wanted also to thank her for, because of that video, it went viral, everybody was able to see. And I'm proud everywhere that I stand. People talk about this video. They talk about our police department, our fire department, public works, and all the people that I mentioned, even the Red Cross that came in and helping the neighbor. So once again, on behalf of the New Britain Latino Coalition, we want to thank our department, our city. Nothing new for our city and the department. We know that we have the best. But in a time that it was so bad, in the middle of a storm, and everything looked so ugly, and everything was so bad, our department came up and did what they trained for, and the outcome was positive. And once again, gracias, Gabby Busanet. Buen trabajo, nuestro héroe. He's our hero. And also Clarissa, for the video. She has to get the credit. Without the video, we would never have seen this. So once again, and also, as always, we're always very proud of our administration and our aldermen and alderman woman for the great job they do every day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come forward to speak? Anyone else would like to come forward to speak for public participation? Third and last time, anyone else who would like to speak for public participation? Seeing none, and this public participation section is closed at 7:10 PM. Thank you. We'll be beginning our meeting shortly. Are there any aldermen who would like to have any comments at all tonight? Seeing none? Alderman Naples, good evening.
Good evening. Just one correction for the record. One, Attorney Zagorski, I think, meant 400,000 gallons a day, not 400 million gallons a day, that Soullington pumped out of Patton Brook well. That's it.
I'm sure if he said that, he stands corrected. We'll check the record on that, sir. Anyone else in the council? Time we begin our meeting shortly. Thank you.
I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the New Britain Common Council. The date is February 22, 2017, and the time is 7:20 PM. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
All the persons, Giantonio.
Here.
Smedley. Carlosi.
Yes.
Black.
Present.
Collins.
Present.
Davis. Hargraves.
Here.
Naples.
Here.
Pabon. Polkowski.
Present.
Rosado.
Here.
Salvio.
Here.
Sanchez.
Here.
Sanders. Salerno.
Here.
11 present, Your Honor.
Can the record please reflect Alderman Davis is approaching right now, and he is here?
Here.
To the mayors.
Also, just for the record, Alderman Pabon is in the Southern Office in Puerto Rico still, so we wish him very well, and we're all very jealous of him in the warm weather right now. Alderman Smedley is at home ill, as he returned from a very long bus ride as a chaperone with our New Britain High School marching band. But he is, he caught a cold or something while he was on that bus for 27 hours. And Alderman Sanders, unfortunately, is out of state this evening at a funeral, so. Thank you. Can we all please rise for the invocation, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let us pray. O God, our heavenly Father, while many observe the Lenten season by sacrificing something of importance, give us the will not to succumb to our vice. From your Spirit, guide us through our faults and weaknesses. Give us the willpower to fast from bitterness, anger, anxiety, and pessimism, and accept with open arms optimism, patience, hope, and forgiveness. We ask this in thy name. Amen.
Amen. And the Pledge of Allegiance led by Carmelo Rodriguez.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Carmelo. Please take a seat. Before we start the official business of the meeting this evening, we have some very, we have a very, very important guest with us this evening. And I would be remiss if we did not take an opportunity to say a few words about our special guest with us. And I know we have our fire chief, Rinaldo, and our police chief, Wardwell, who would like to add a few things, too, once I am done speaking about Gabby. Gabby, why don't you come up? Come up to the podium there. Thank you very much for coming this evening. Don't worry, we won't ask you to talk if you don't want to. I know it can be like a little stressful, but I do want to say a few words and allow the council to say some things to you as well, because it is very, very well deserved. And thankfully, it's not very often that we get to stand here and do this. But when it does happen, it's extremely important that we recognize individuals who go above and beyond in our community and in our city of New Britain. So the events that unfolded on the day of Thursday, February 9, were certainly unexpected. Two storms produced over 20 inches of snow that were barreled down on us in less than 48 hours. You never know what's going to happen when Mother Nature certainly shows us her ugly side, and there's nothing that we can do to control that, right? The roads were covered with snow. Snow was coming down at over four inches an hour, making it impossible for every town or community in the state to keep up with the amount of snow that was on the roads, and snow removal efforts were very difficult. And then we received a 911 call in the middle of it. A fire had broken out on West Street, an apartment building on West Street, where there were over 20 people residing in that building. The winds from the storm caused that fire to spread very, very quickly, making for a very harrowing situation. There were screams that were heard throughout the entire neighborhood as families and people were hanging out of windows on the upper floors of the building, waiting and wanting help. Every second that afternoon made a difference. And Juan, Gabby Busanet, who happened to be in the area, saw that fire, and he sprang into action. He found a ladder, put it up against that tall building, trying to find the best way to get the children out of the top floor of that structure that was now engulfed in flames, which only took minutes at most. The families were trapped in that building, and there was no way out except for those windows. Other neighbors approached the scene, throwing mattresses underneath the second window so that residents can jump out onto something soft and safe. And Juan climbed up the ladder. Gabby, sorry, go by Gabby. Gabby climbed up the ladder and just started grabbing children from the window, as what we saw on Facebook. With one arm on the ladder, he used his other arm to reach for the children and gently move that ladder down to safety, one with one arm. When the first responders arrived, they quickly worked to get safely the remaining children and occupants out of the building. But it's not very often that we find situations like this, but very important that when tragedy happens, we recognize our neighbors who are there to support one another, and in this case, save people's lives. Your instincts, Gabby, are absolutely incredible. Your actions that day were honorable. We owe a debt of gratitude to you for risking your own life to save those little lives that you saved out of that building, and the lives of your neighbors, neighbors that you didn't even know. So on behalf of a grateful city, I want to come down, and I want to present you with a certificate of recognition and read that into the record, because I think that it is very, very well deserved. And we need to tell you how grateful we are for your actions that were, I'm sure, instinctive. So let me come down and give this to you. And I'll read it when I get down. He has to stand there as part of the phone call here. So I want to read a certificate of recognition presented to you for your heroic actions during the fire on February 9, 2017, where you rescued your neighbors. Your selfless actions to save lives are honorable. You exemplify a level of courage that we strive to be in every citizen of our city. We're proud to call you the resident of our city. Thank you very much. I want to call up Chief Rinaldo to meet you with members of our fire commission from this thing, who also have something that they would like to present to you.
Good evening, everyone. So I just had the opportunity to meet Gabby this evening and tell him how proud of him I was. And I also said to him, and I'll say again, that while we embrace his heroism and his actions that day, at the same time, it's a double-edged sword, because in my safety mind, I want to tell him, "Don't do it." And I want to urge everyone else not to do these things, but at the same time, we want to encourage people to do them. And I say that because rescuing people over a ladder in a building fire situation, even for trained firefighters, is one of the most dangerous things that you can do. So that can't be overstated, because of the danger of just yourself falling off the ladder, the people you're rescuing falling off the ladder. So for those reasons, it's extremely dangerous, and makes his actions even more, you know, proudful for us to be here tonight. So due to his actions that day, on behalf of the New Britain Fire Department, we would like to present him a Citizen Service Award for those citizens who go above and beyond in these kinds of situations, very rare situations, who go above and beyond, put themselves in harm's way for the rescue of saving other people's lives. And Gabby did that that day on West Street, and we would like to present him now with
We're not done yet, Gabby. Sorry. Sorry. I also want to recognize our fire commission members that are here. Please stand. These are three outstanding members of our fire commission that wanted to make sure that they were here this evening to honor you as well. And I know Chief Wardwell from our police department has a little something for you as well.
So that was such a challenging day. Our first responders could not get around very swiftly. You were there before we could get there. But the very first officers on scene started telling a story about what you and others were doing, and it was amazing. And we haven't stopped talking about it. You are a true hero. I am truly honored to be here today. And on behalf of the New Britain Police Department, and each and every officer is so appreciative of you giving so much of yourself, risking your lives for folks you didn't know, definition of a hero. I mean, just, God bless you. But on behalf of the New Britain Police Department, I'm offering you some challenge coins and some pins, and please cherish them the way we cherish you.[1275.41][1275.41](applause)
Okay, I promise we're done now. I promise, that's it. If you'd like to say something.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate all the good messages, all the good blessings, and thank you, and thanks for the firefighter, too. They did a great job, because I left that day two people up in the third floor, and that was my main concern. After I saved like five or six people, I was still worrying about them, and they saved them. So they did a good job, too. Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. God bless you.[1326.13][1326.13](applause) And thank you to your family as well, who's here with you, family and friends. Thank you. Thank you. Would any alderperson like to try?
Yes, Your Honor.
Alderman Salerno?
Yes. Thank you, Your Honor. And I wanted to first bring some messages from several aldermen who could not be here, obviously, but in conversation, they wanted to express, you know, their congratulations. I wanted to say I watched the video, and I saw him go up the ladder the first time. I said, "Well, that was pretty cool. Wow, that was amazing that he kept doing it." It was, I could not believe, watching that, that was happening literally probably a mile and a half from my home and within this community, and it's just a great combination. I'm sure every other alderman is going to want to say something, but I certainly just, on behalf of the council, want to just say, we are just incredibly appreciative of your gallantry and your heroism. Thanks for staying in the city of New Britain, and keep making us proud. Thank you.
Alderman Carlosi?
Thank you, Your Honor. So Gabby, what touched me even more tonight was what you just said at the very end. As you came down, you knew that there were two more people on that third floor, and you still were very, very worried, even though you had already rescued five or six people. You were still very worried about those two others that were in there. That speaks volumes about the kind of character that you are, and you may not have realized what you said when you said that, and what it says about you as an individual. I'm sure that morning, when you woke up, you never thought that your day would end up like that. And I'm sure for those 20 people in that house, they never realized when they woke up and saw all that beautiful snow falling, that their day would turn out like that. But to find an angel, a hero, to walk by their home and rescue them is absolutely amazing. And I just really think that the impact that you made on those families is something that they will never forget. But I have a feeling that what you did that day, and what came out of you that day, in terms of the heroism that you didn't even know that you probably had within you, is going to set your course a little different than maybe what it was prior to that walking by and helping your friend whose car had broken down. I mean, therein of itself, in the middle of a snowstorm, your mayor, in the middle of the snowstorm, you're walking with your friend because her car broke down. It's just absolutely amazing. So thank you. Thank you. It's just, I don't even, I don't know what more to say, other than I'm going to repeat myself. Thank you. Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Any other alderman? Alderman Rosado?
Thank you, Your Honor. I also want to echo some of the sentiments spoken previously by my fellow aldermen. You know, we have this new ad campaign here for the city of New Britain, which means "Experience the New." And a lot of times, we can equate that with economics or whatever issue of the day. But when we're talking about experiencing the new, it's because we want to see a new spirit rise up in the city of New Britain within our residents, within our neighbors. And I thank you for that, and I ask God to continue to bless you, because you're a representation of what we want in this community, that people can see that this is a community that, despite our many differences, that when push comes to shove, we're going to love our neighbor as we love ourselves. So God bless you. I pray that he will bless you, guide your shining face upon you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other alderman? Gabby, thank you so much again. Thank you. All right. Moving on to approval of the minutes. Alderman Giantonio?
No minutes, Your Honor.
We have no minutes this evening. Amendments to the agenda? Alderman Giantonio?
No amendments, Your Honor.
No amendments. Mr. Clerk, for petitions?
No petitions, Your Honor.
No petitions? Man, Gabby, you're good luck.[1567.83][1567.83](laughing) We'll move on to the consent agenda. Alderman Giantonio?
Thank you, Your Honor. The only item I am aware of being asked off of consent is item C. Therefore, I make a motion to accept a consent agenda consisting of items A, B, D, E, and F.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Salerno. Questions, concerns, nothing? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll for the consent agenda.
All the persons, Giantonio.
Yes.
Carlosi.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hargraves.
Yes.
Naples.
Yes.
Polkowski.
Yes.
Rosado.
Yes.
Salvio.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Salerno.
Yes.
12-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item C, Alderman Carlosi?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept report number C.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Hargraves.
This is mayor.
Alderwoman Black?
I'd like to recuse myself.
Oh, you can absolutely recuse yourself for a personal conflict. Let the record reflect that. Her granddaughter is employed. Alderman Carlosi?
Thank you, Your Honor. And that's the exact reason why we did pull it off of consent.
Okay.
But this is from the Department of Health, and it's a record software, purchase of electronic health records and software for the Health Department, and the good alderwoman had a relative that works there, and just felt that it would be best for her to recuse herself. It's a purchase order in the amount of $19,562 to Patagonia Health for the purchase of electronic health records and software modules with deployment services, with training, and first year annual maintenance and support for the New Britain Health Department, and I urge its acceptance. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments in the report? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alderwoman Black, you're welcome back. And we will continue moving on to resolution number one. Alderman Polkowski?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion, or a motion to accept and refer to Committee of Licensing, resolution number one.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Giantonio.
This resolution pertains to the Little Poland Festival that we all know and love. It's happening April 30 from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Numerous streets are closed, lots of vendors, lots of good food. I encourage everyone to come out. If you're Polish, feel free to wear all your colors. If you're not Polish, make sure you buy a couple shirts at the festival. And I just look forward to this festival. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions or comments about the license for Little Poland Festival? Seeing none, all those in favor of the referral signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number two goes to Alderman Collins.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept and adopt resolution number two.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Rosado.
Thank you. Resolution number two is the acceptance of grant funds the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, DESPP, as a designated recipient and state administrative agency of the United States Department of Homeland Security for the State Homeland Security Grant Program. These funds will be applied to specific projects developed and approved by the Region Three, REPT. New Britain also agrees to allow CR COG to provide financial and program- New Britain also agrees to allow CRCOG to provide financial and programmatic oversight of the allocations targeted for municipalities in Region Three, and I urge adoption.
Thank you, Alderman. Just for clarification, there are a lot of acronyms going on in here right now. The REPT is the Regional Emergency Planning Team and CROG is our Council of Governments, our Regional Council of Governments. There is about seven different acronyms in here right now. Anyways, I just want to clarify that in case there's any questions. And also just to say, the City Council, this body actually already approved this item at a meeting prior, but because of the name change for Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, they're asking us to redo it again just to have the proper name in it as well. Any other questions or comments?